I'd like to bring the meeting to order and ask that roll be called please.
Blue?
Here.
Disharoon?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Holthouser?
Here.
Humble?
Here.
Wagonback?
Here.
Wisdom?
Here.
Okay, I'd ask that you please mute your microphones and if everybody could please just stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance at this time.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Before we begin with public participation, there's one agenda item that we're gonna have to table because we just did not get the information that we were waiting on. So I would like to suggest that we table the item under Action Item I Banner Playground. Do I have a motion to table?
So I'm moved.
Second.
Okay, thank you very much. We're gonna start now with, the board will now move on to public participation portion of the meeting and we'll start with Dr. Dearman's superintendent report. And before we go further, Dr. Dearman, happy 50th birthday to you tomorrow.
Go easy on that. I got another day to live in my 40s.
Okay, happy 50th birthday to you Thursday, right? Is it Thursday?
It's coming.
Sorry to interrupt, but do we need to vote on that since we had a motion in the second?
Yes.
Oh, yes, go ahead. We do need to do that. Debbie, could you?
Can you explain what was the reasoning for that?
We were waiting on a few bids. We've not received those bids yet. And so we've been waiting for those and then when we get that information, we'll be able to actually give a better idea on the material that needs to be used.
Okay.
So Mike made a motion, Karen seconded it. We'll need a roll call vote.
Wisdom? Wisdom?
Hi, yes.
Thank you. Disharoon?
Hi.
Henry?
Hi.
Holthouser?
Hi.
Humble?
Hi.
Wagonback?
I'm gonna vote no. I think we would have had plenty of time to do all that.
And Blue?
Hi.
Okay, Dr. Dearman, now we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay, can you see me still because I changed screens?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. First item had one FOIA request for some custodial staff information from SEIU Local 73 and that has been completed. Just some general announcements, some congratulations. It's not typical to do things this way, but they still deserve the recognition in that some of our retirements. So we have Lori Cave, a teacher. May 22nd will be her last day. We have Randy Black, he's a teacher as well. Janelle Neemeyer, she's a teacher. Norma Meyer is a cook. Karen Wenskes is a secretary. And then just a few other ones that happened earlier, but still wanna recognize them. Carrie Ricky, superintendent secretary, retired back in December. Frank Kowalski, a bus driver in November. And Diane Hausman, a bus driver, also retired back in December. So congratulations to those folks and appreciate all your years of service to the Dunlap School District. And then the last information item or piece of information I have to share is just a word of congratulations, I guess, to Stephanie Pitzer. Mandy Ellis, who's principal at DGSE, is potentially taking a maternity leave in the fall when we're scheduled to come back to school. And we'll have more conversation about that here in a bit, but if she, you know, needs a sub, because we're back in school as usual, Mrs. Pitzer is going to be her sub for the first quarter. So she has accepted the position contingent upon, you know, what happens here in the future with what unfolds. So, and that is all I have, Dr. Humble.
Thank you. And on behalf of the board, I also want to congratulate those retirees and let them know that we do appreciate them for their many years of service. We're gonna move on to public comments. Dr. Dearman, do you have anyone emailed to you for public comments?
I have John and Sarah with the DEA. And then I've got a plethora of teachers from foreign language that would like to speak as well. So I will turn the floor over to them.
Their microphones are muted, Dr. Dearman, so.
I'll go first.
Okay.
Okay. My name is Sarah Solorio and I'm the co-president of the DEA with John and I'm going to be speaking on behalf of the DEA Leadership Team. And so during our last special session board meeting on Monday, May 4th, the DEA Executive Board was alarmed at what appeared to be a common theme from several members. The idea that learning was less important than the grades received. This is extremely concerning to us as educators. Our prime focus was and continues to be, even during remote learning, on student learning, mastering and retaining skills while building intrinsic motivation for success. The decision to disregard the recommendations of the professional educators, both teachers and administrators, in order for students to receive an A regardless of their understanding and interaction with the material set, sets a dangerous precedent for a district that prides itself on the strength of its academics. And it further hurts those students who do not have equal access to support system, to a support system or tools at home such as the internet. Even colleges are acknowledging that learning is the more important outcome at this point, as many of them are choosing to go the pass fail route during this time, including prestigious Ivy League schools such as Yale and Columbia. If our goal during remote learning is to give accurate and ethical feedback that will help support students as they move forward, emphasizing grades above learning does not achieve this. In fact, in a recent webinar on grading during remote learning for the Association of Middle Level Educators, Rick Hormelley even states that grades are likely to be inaccurate reports of learning. During this time, as students deal with a variety of at-home issues, from mental health to internet access to different levels of support to different income levels, the board's support of grades over learning is not only inequitable but unethical. The original plan created by a team of educators for the semester grading split allowed the focus to shift to feedback that would support learning of the skills during this time instead of using assessments to build the grade and little else. As other districts across the country have the same conversations, superintendents and board members from Washington to Ohio are concerned with pushing the grades above all else as it is unfairly punitive to students who are English language learners and to those who are low income. The recent actions of the board undermine the trust that is necessary to work collaboratively as teachers, administrators, and board members in the best interest of all students. Learning should consistently be the top priority and our practices should consistently reflect that. Thank you.
Mr. Allison?
Good evening. My name is John Allison and I am one of the co-presidents of the Dunlap Education Association. Before I get to my main point of my message this evening, please allow me the opportunity to make just a couple of statements. The Dunlap Education Association represents the 293 hardworking, dedicated, and tireless teachers of the school district who were given three days to completely revamp the way education was delivered to the students of this district, and they nailed it. I've had the honor and privilege of representing these teachers for seven of the last eight years. During this time, I have met a vast majority of them and I'm confident in saying that you won't find a better group of educators anywhere. On behalf of Sarah and myself, I want to say that we appreciate everything the teachers have done and will continue to do for all students in our district. As co-president, I've also worked with every administrator, both unit office and building level in this district. Even though we may have differing opinions at times, I have never once doubted their dedication to all of the students in our district. Again, on behalf of Sarah and myself, I just want to say that we appreciate everything you have done and will continue to do for all of the students in our district. Now to the main point of my message this evening. Tonight, a potential policy change is being introduced that is another example of overreach by a member or members of the Board of Education. On the agenda this evening is an information item in regards to revising Policy 220, Powers and Duties of the Board of Education, Item 9. The revision being presented would require the Board of Education to approve all changes related to grading, academics, offerings, and content and other rules and procedures included in school handbooks and high school curriculum guide prior to implementation. This policy language and the means by which it is potentially being approved does not comply with the description of how an effective school board operates. According to the Illinois Association of School Boards website, an effective school board demonstrates the following characteristics. It knows the difference between governance and management. This policy change would have the Board of Education managing the district, which is not your duty. An effective board makes every effort to operate openly by encouraging public attendance at its meetings and keeping constituents informed of the district's progress. So with the shelter in place order, how has the Board of Education been notifying the public of these meetings? Has the public been informed of this potential change? An effective board enacts major policies only after all sides of the matter have been studied and all persons or groups affected have been consulted. Now, I know this has not been done since as co-president of the Dunlap Education Association, I would be one of those people consulted. An effective board attempts to reach decisions that all members can support. And I'm just gonna leave that to you guys to ponder. An effective board maintains effective procedures to conduct business. And an effective board works to provide quality education opportunities for all students of the district. The board talks about education, studies the needs of students and the community, and bases its decisions on those needs. So tonight I am interested in hearing how this policy change is based on studies any of you have done on the needs of the students and the community. I would like to request that you provide actual data and not vague descriptions such as, "I have talked to parents." How many parents have you talked to? And if you don't have an exact number, at least a ballpark estimate would be nice. IASB's website also lists characteristics of effective school board members. One characteristic stands out to me. The recognition that the school district is a large operation and that the board is responsible for seeing that the district is run by highly skilled professionals. So the addition of this language would lead me to believe that at least one member of the Board of Education does not believe the district is run by highly skilled professionals. Do other members of the board believe that there are not highly skilled professionals running this district? As I stated at the beginning of my message this evening, I can attest to the fact that the administration and teachers in this district are second to none. If you have a different opinion, then please feel free to contact me and I would be more than willing to discuss with you what I have experienced in my now 20 years in this district. Let me close with this. Do not give this revision anytime this evening. Table it like you did the item on the playground. Let Dr. Dearman, Mr. Hackett, Mr. Andrews, and all of the other highly skilled administrators and teachers do their job. We do not need you doing it for us. Thank you.
Anyone else to address in public comments? Dr. Dearman?
Yes, I'll go next. My name is Lauren Hanson. I've been a French teacher at Dunlap High School for the past 10 years.
Lauren, can I interrupt you real quick?
Yes, please.
I'm trying to remember. Did you have a document for me to share? I don't think so.
Oh!
I forget it.
Yes, we had created, the Foreign Language Department had created a visual. If you wanna share it, you totally can.
I'll get it. Well, go ahead and speak and I'll get it as you speak.
Sounds good. All right. Like I said, my name is Lauren Hanson. I've been a French teacher at Dunlap High School for the past 10 years. And I'm speaking tonight to express my full support for the changes proposed to the World Language Explorer classes at the middle schools. The proposed changes will streamline the curriculum in this nine-week course and improve the experience for our students. The current curriculum involves a choice between Spanish or French language for nine weeks in sixth grade and then another choice between Spanish or French culture in seventh grade. These choices have created difficulties for both students and teachers. Students could choose one language one year and then a different culture the next year, which means that students are coming into their courses with different levels of knowledge. This also creates confusion for students who are not clearly understanding what a culture course entails and believe they're choosing one language for one year and the other language for the next, which results in disappointment and frustration. The current structure is not doing what the Explore Language class is meant to do. Expose students to the languages that Dunlap offers so that they can make an informed decision about which language they want to study later on. The exposure to language and culture is the main purpose of this nine-week course. I have heard concerns at previous board meetings that if the students have to split their nine-week course between Spanish and French, they will not achieve adequate Spanish proficiency if they continue to study Spanish. However, linguistic proficiency is not the purpose of the Explore Language classes. Nine weeks of any language is not enough to develop proficiency. And therefore, the proposed changes will not damage the proficiency students will achieve in their future language studies. What the new proposal will do, however, is offer students equal exposure to both of the languages we offer here at Dunlap. This will in turn provide support to our French program, which is in the final stages of creating an AP program aligned to that of AP Spanish. Equal exposure to both of our language programs is vital to help our students discover which language they wish to continue studying. I have heard further concerns at a previous meeting that students should be receiving more exposure to their languages. However, this would involve an entire overhaul of the middle school schedule. We did not bring this proposal to you to create a new program. We are here to improve the one that already exists in order to offer the best possible education to our students. In addition to exposing students to both French and Spanish, the Explore World Language classes teach our students to develop cultural competency, helping them to better understand and appreciate our diverse world. In adapting the curriculum outlined in the proposal, we would be highly increasing our student study of various cultures, many of which are represented in our own community. For example, we have many families with Hispanic heritage in our area as well as a significant population of Francophone families. There are 54 countries in our world who identify themselves as Francophone, which means that the French language plays a meaningful role in their culture. In the last few years, our community has experienced a significant increase in immigration from African Francophone countries and many of these families have children who attend Dunlap schools. The proposal in front of you allows our students to participate in a cultural exchange in their own community and further develop their cultural competency at an early age, which will help them grow into citizens of our global society. In conclusion, I believe that the proposal before you offers only benefits to our students and to our language programs here at Dunlap. I hope you will take into consideration the education and experience of the professionals addressing you tonight as you make your decision. Thank you, and I believe Ellen Bennifield is going to speak next.
Hi, good evening. Ellen Bennifield here. I'm a Spanish teacher at DHS. Tim, Ann, Mike, Karen, I've taught several of your children and without exception, they are fantastic people. And I've personally seen that you are deeply invested in your children's education. And learning a language is really tough. You can ask any of your kids. I just wanna briefly illustrate the difference between the Explore Language program and a language class, more traditional. The Explore Language program by design is kind of a sample plate that allows students to see and experience something that they can choose to pursue at a later time. I really enjoy Cartville in West Peoria and my elementary kids love to, you know, go around in go-karts, my own personal children, but they can't drive. And the difference in four and a half weeks of Spanish in the Explore Language program and nine weeks of Spanish is kinda like the difference between two laps around the go-kart track and four laps around the go-kart track. I mean, sure, four is definitely more, but we all understand that go-kart time has very little bearing on whether or not someone becomes a proficient driver in the future. In the same way, a Language Explore program by design exposes students to a wide variety of experiences, but whether they have four and a half weeks or nine weeks of Spanish has very little bearing on a student's Spanish fluency in the future. We want our kids to make informed decisions. Just on a personal note, Karen, your son stands out as just an incredible, delightful, successful student. But he told me a few different times that he really regretted not pursuing French in high school. And by allowing students to kind of taste both languages, because even nine weeks is just a small taste, we set them up for success and we help them to make a good decision that they won't regret. So, thank you for your time. I'm gonna turn it over to my colleague Amy Frederick.
Good evening. My name is Amy Frederick and I'm also here to support the proposed change in the middle school Foreign Language Explore classes. I've taught Spanish 1 and Spanish 1 pre-AP at Dunlap Middle School as well as Dunlap High School for the last few years. Therefore, my goal is to reassure you that this minor change will have no negative effects on the Spanish 1 curriculum and beyond. The first reason that this proposed change of studying both Spanish and French side by side won't affect students' Spanish proficiency is that the topics taught in Explore Language classes, just like Ellen said, are meant to expose students to a language and not build proficiency. Specifically, currently in sixth grade Spanish Explore, students currently learn greetings, the alphabet, numbers, colors, and countries that speak Spanish, which are valuable topics but only compose a very small portion of the Spanish 1 curriculum. The second reason that this proposed change will not harm students' Spanish skills is that the main benefit students gain from Explore Foreign Language classes is the exposure to the language. Whether they study Spanish or French, either way, students build confidence, interest, comfort, and learning strategies. Whichever language students studied in middle school Explore, I see students starting Spanish 1 with a greater respect for languages and knowledge of how a class will work. But effective benefits gained from the Explore Language classes far outweigh the language skills gained. As I just said, teaching both Spanish and French in the same class will not impede students' ability to succeed in Spanish 1 and beyond. Rather, it will help them. But more frequently, someone practices any skill, the more they improve. This is known as spaced repetition. By teaching these languages in both sixth and seventh grade, students will better retain the language and the skills to learn it. Currently, students experience gap years in seventh and possibly eighth grade as both classes are currently focusing on culture, not language, and our goal is continuous learning. Therefore, I'd ask you tonight to approve that proposed model, which will streamline language and culture throughout all of middle school. We'll be thankful not only for the opportunity to explore both languages, but also for the consistency to build language skills. And speaking next will be another Spanish teacher, Sandra Idapalo.
Buenas noches. Me llamo Sandra Idapalo y yo vivo y trabajo en el distrito escolar de Dunlap. Mis hijos asisten las escuelas de Dunlap y mi esposo también trabaja en una de las escuelas. Good evening. My name is Sandra Idapalo and I live and work in Dunlap School District. I also said a couple of other fun facts about myself, but my intentions in my introduction was to spark an interest in what I was saying. I imagine that some of you were intrigued and took on the challenge to capture some of the words as you may have taken a world language in the past. Perhaps you have never taken a world language and wish you had, or perhaps it reiterated the fact that you aren't interested in learning another language. Regardless, I created an opportunity to get your attention and sparked an interest, or perhaps a disinterest. This is exactly what an Explore Language class does. It allows students to be exposed to a class so that they are able to make an informed decision before taking on an entire class on the subject. Explore programs allow students to see the basics. For example, back when I was in eighth grade, I decided to take two Explore classes that were completely different from each other, yet alike, sewing and woodshop. Both classes exposed me to basic life skills that would allow me to decide if I wanted to continue to learn more in the future. Sewing showed me the basics such as sewing a button and a tiny little pillow versus woodshop showed me how to safely use a hammer to nail in a nail and to wear safety goggles when operating heavy machinery. My eighth grade self would be surprised that the exposure to these two entirely different skills motivated me to take more classes, learn from experts, and I am now using these skills in one of my greatest hobbies, community theater. I've sewn costumes, built and fixed sets, and created props. These two very different skills work in unison to create something incredible. Tonight, I am here as a Spanish teacher supporting equal exposure to Spanish and French classes. Yes, two different languages and yet they can work together. I believe that exposing our students to multiple languages allows them to experience and learn about a variety of different and beautiful cultures, which is why I support the proposed changes to the Explore Language program. Gracias and merci. I will now turn to my colleague, Ms. Catherine Walter.
Hey, guys. My name is Catherine Walter and I've been teaching Spanish in the Dunlap School District since 2014. During my time as a Dunlap Spanish teacher, I've had the opportunity to teach at both the high school and at the middle school at some point in my career. Last summer, I completed my master's degree in Spanish Language and Culture at the University of Salamanca in Spain and I'm really excited to share my perspective with you guys here today about the implementation of our language and culture classes at the middle school level. First of all, I genuinely want to thank you guys a lot for making language learning a priority throughout our school district. Today's proposed changes to the World Language Explore class is just the natural next step in supporting our French and Spanish programs and setting them up both for success at the high school. My colleagues have already explained the purpose of the Language Explore program and our desire to offer our best program for language acquisition and for cultural understanding through this program. Our goal is not for students to acquire great amounts of the language that they will be unable to retain with just one quarter of language per year. Rather, our goal is for students to have an experience that sparks their interest and their appreciation that will jumpstart their passion for learning when they get to the high school level classes. My Spanish 1 students have a sense of pride and excitement when they talk about their middle school language experiences. They always wanna listen to the songs they remember from previous year when we talk about parts of the body or other fun vocabulary or grammar topics that we cover. And I find that it's rarely students' middle school language knowledge that helps them succeed in language class, but rather their great experiences with the language and culture that motivates them to just dive into the immersion experience once they get the chance. As a Spanish teacher, I want our French students to have those equal opportunities to see the exact same success as our Spanish students. Giving students the opportunity to experience both languages is essential to their success later on and is the whole reason we dedicate this important time in their middle school years to let them explore their options. Supporting the proposed changes to the World Language Explore program is just the next step in ensuring great language acquisition and cultural understanding for all languages, I'm sorry, for all language students in the Dunlap School District. Thank you, guys.
Okay, Dr. Dearman, is that it? I wanna thank the teachers for sharing their opinions with us. We really appreciate hearing your feedback. Dr. Dearman, do we have anyone else to address us in public participation?
No, not that I am aware of.
All right, thank you very much. This time we'll move on to public, oh, no, I mean, sorry, this concludes the public participation portion of the meeting. The board will now move on to the information discussion items. School activity account reports are included in the packet. Are there any questions? Next, Dr. Dearman will give us an update on the COVID-19 future planning. Dr. Dearman?
Yes, let me share yet another screen. You should be seeing that now. This could be a whole evening discussion in and of itself, but, you know, there's been a lot of concerns, a lot of questions come up about what are we gonna be doing in the fall? And the bottom line is, no one knows just yet what we're going to be doing. We were told to prepare for three scenarios. First scenario is, you know, business as usual. We're starting like we have every, you know, any other year. I find that highly unlikely and I think most people do as well. Things have changed and understandably so. A second option to prepare for was full remote learning, just as we just finished. Not a fan of that. I mean, we did what we had to, but I think we all are in agreement that we want our kids back in school. That's where they learn the most. That's where they learn the best. And then the third option, which I think is probably most likely, is some form of a hybrid model. Now, that's where all the discussion comes in. There's been a multitude of plans discussed. We have gotten zero guidance at this point of what that hybrid model would look like. We've been given some general guidelines and I sent a correspondence out to the board earlier. I received 14 emails or correspondences just today regarding... I received 14 emails or correspondences just today regarding a return to school initiative program, webinar, meeting from various groups, and they're not all the same. So, what I am showing on the screen, Peoria Public School District, and they gave me permission to use this. This is their plan and their committees that they have put together. And we talked about, you know, task force. This is their task force and how they have it broken down. And I provided the board with an example that I had found from another source of what they're doing to start to look at some of the things that are feasible for our districts and some things that are not. And then this is Peoria's work and I'll scroll down so you can see it. I think they've got six committees here and then they've got subcommittees or, you know, topics underneath each of those. I think it's a good place to start in our ROE meeting this morning. It was one of the more interesting, ROE is Regional Office of Education, it's all the area superintendents. So, there was 25 people in on that meeting, 25 superintendents or area representatives. It was one of the more interesting ones that we've had. Just the level of frustration is growing just because of the fact that unlike, I think John Allison stated, unlike when we transitioned to remote learning, you know, we were given three days. We got it done and I thought we did pretty well. I mean, things could always be improved, but, you know, considering the timeframe we are under, we rolled out a remote planning instructional program in three days and also included in that meal delivery and several other things and we got it done. So, I'm fully confident that we can put together a plan for a return to school if we're given a direction on what we need to plan for. So, I think we can start to, you know, put some things on paper and get some ideas as far as, we're not using the word social distancing as much anymore because we know that's going to be difficult in school, but mitigating factors or mitigation, what things can we do with our schools right now to try and prevent, you know, students running into one another? Again, I just wanted to put this out here as a topic of conversation. I think it's going to be more important now than ever. As you can see by the number of committees and each time you ask a question, you know, three more are going to come up, there's going to be a very large quantity and volume of work that's going to need to be done. And this isn't something one person can do. It's too large for one person to tackle. So, we're going to need to break this apart. I think it's important that we get stakeholders involved and I know the board members have all stated this as well, so I'm telling you guys something you already know. But, you know, I'd like to have some board members on there, some teachers on there, some community people on there, some parents on there, just to get an idea of, all right, you know, these are some of our thoughts, what does this look like in practice? Is this something that will work for the Dunlap District? Because, you know, if it works for us, great, it may not work for someone else. But to start having some of those local discussions as we move forward. One thing I don't want to do is put together all these committees and do a ton of work around a hybrid model that we think will work and then have the guidance come out and it's completely contrary to the work we've been doing. That's a complete waste of time and effort. The general consensus in the ROE meeting is that many were waiting, some were stating July. I don't know if I want to go that late, but, you know, maybe in a couple of weeks to see what happens with the expiration of the current executive order and what phase we move into and if there's any further guidance that comes out. Again, you know, I got 14 emails about that today, so it's a hot topic and it's ever-changing. I just don't want to rush into it and start throwing things together and then have it be for nothing because the rules changed on us in the middle of the game. So, I'll turn it over. I've said enough already, but just wanted to give the board an idea of some of the things that others are doing and some of the things that I'm hearing so that we have an idea of at least a direction. There's no sense in reinventing the wheel here. We can piggyback off others' work. So, I'll stop now.
Thank you, Dr. Dearman, for that overview and I'm sure that at this time, everybody's just kind of walking around in the dark, not knowing exactly what to do. And if you're like me, you get on the mission early and then you end up having to do it over again because the state board will change things on you. So, I understand the desire to want to hold off a few weeks and you let us know when you think it's time to get started, so. Okay, district office update, next?
I wanted to discuss a few more things on the...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't ask if there are any questions. Go ahead, Karen.
COVID-19. One thing I wanted to discuss was, you know, possible expansion of summer school. I know there's been a lot of talk about loss of learning and, you know, just students getting out of the groove of, you know, studying and learning. And I know there's also a challenge of finding instructors for summer school. But, and the other factor is that I have heard from a number of parents that they're hoping for an expansion of summer school. And so, I was just wondering if there's any possibility at all to expand some summer school offerings, maybe even also beyond the high school. I know we're doing that math at the middle school and I've heard really positive feedback on that. But are there other options where there could be an opportunity for those who can afford to, to pay and those who can't have, you know, to receive that free, to expand summer school opportunities?
Karen, were you able to...
I certainly see that as a possibility. The CARES Act money was just put on Iowa's, our state reporting system yesterday, and you can use CARES Act money to pay for summer school. So, I think that's certainly an option and I think that would be a nice committee for Mrs. Disharun to chair, explore those options.
And didn't Mr. Adrian or Dr. Adrian put out an email today about the summer courses they were going to be able to save?
Correct, but those were the ones that he was already, that we've already been doing and he's already expanded that program exponentially over the years. I think Mrs. Disharun is referring to an expansion even beyond what we typically do.
Okay.
And I know there's a limitation that some classes you just can't do because it's not conducive to do in a short time period, but I would love to see that offered. I just think it's in this unprecedented time, it would be just a great opportunity for a student.
Karen, were you thinking an online version or are you thinking face-to-face?
Well, I mean, whatever's, I mean, if it's allowed to be in person, that would be awesome. But if it can't be, then I guess online. And if it could be blended, that would be even better, I think. But, I mean, whatever the staff could, you know, would recommend and could do.
Okay.
I wanted to add too that even with the classes they had, if there were more teachers, if more students could get in, I know, you know, beyond the fact that there was some learning loss that we didn't have our, you know, our regular instruction, is a lot of students, you know, their plans have drastically changed. And I think more people just want to do it and would have signed up in the beginning if they knew the way things were going to go.
And then I had a couple of other questions with regard with summer school. One is early start. I've heard other schools in maybe other states, I don't know, I've just been reading about it, that some people are considering an early start to school, given that there's some concern that there may be a second or third wave or whatever of the virus again in the fall and winter. Has there been any thought to early start?
The conversations that I've been involved with, that has been mentioned, but the bigger concern or I guess question that's come up is a later start pushing things back, you know, into, you know, Labor Day or I've heard second week of September. I'm not a huge fan of that because I don't think that two weeks later is going to make much of a difference. My biggest concern is, we, if, let's just assume, and again, we don't know, that we open school as we do with mitigating factors and we have in-person attendance for students in August. And numbers be what they are, when you have roughly 5,000 people, when you include staff and students attending the Dunlap District, likely somebody is going to test positive for COVID-19. And the CDC guidelines are that you, you know, have to close the school down for between two and five days and do that deep clean sanitation, which I totally understand, and then you do your back tracing. Well, you know, if, in school, social distancing is going to be very difficult to do and, you know, if they're on the bus, you know, and we have kids that, you know, are on the bus that go, you know, have siblings in other buildings, so they're talking, okay, well, now you've got to do that back tracing and they've got a 14-day quarantine. So, that's going to shut you, potentially shut your district down for 14 days. So, I just don't want to come in and then we're out for two weeks. You come back in and, you know, Murphy's Law will come into play, somebody will test positive again, then we're out for another two weeks. I just think we need some direction from our state officials and Illinois State Board of Education as far as what are the expectations moving forward with the reopening of school and what are the parameters they'd like to see within that? And we just haven't received it. So, I'm open to anything, starting early, starting late, hybrid model. So, yeah, I'm not opposed to that, but that hasn't been the direction that most of the conversations have gone.
My other question was just, you know, there are some budget implications through COVID, a decrease in sales tax revenue, of course, potentially state funds, and of course, property tax values. And so, I was wondering, my suggestion would be to also have a committee that looks at budgets, you know, potential cuts that need to be made in the future to address deficits, not just that we had already had, but also in relation to the effects that COVID is having on our, on our revenues.
Absolutely. And to, let's have something positive, I guess, for out of this. I've got news today, the budget bill that's going to be presented has state funding for schools flat. So, at least it's not a decrease. So, we'll see if that, and there's strings attached to that as well. You know how that goes, but we'll see. But the proposal is going to be flat funding, so that was at least something positive or neutral, I guess. At least it wasn't negative.
Not negative, right. That's good. So, is it your intention to have a superintendent committee on budget issues?
Yeah, I think the last item on that list was a finance committee.
Okay. And then with regard to the other committees, I just bring this up for discussion with the other board members. I know that these would all, it appears these would be all superintendent committees you're proposing, or are you suggesting that some of them should be like a board committee where there is the posting and where anybody can attend? I'm just wondering if some of the discussions on e-learning, if it might be helpful to be, you know, really transparent about those and let others participate and have the posting and all of that for the bigger e-learning type discussion. What do you think?
I think there's going to be a large volume of work and if we make all of these committees of the whole, then it's subject Open Meetings Act and you have to have 48 hours notice, you have to, you know, keep minutes, you have to have minutes approved, things of this nature. I think these need to be more fluid and be able to meet more often and not have some of those restrictions that would hamper that. So, for all of them, I don't think it would be a good idea, but I'm certainly open to the idea if some of these you think would be better served by a larger committee. Yeah, that's fine.
I don't really know, but I'm just wondering if e-learning one, I don't know, what do other board members think?
I tend to agree that we need to keep the committees small, but I also think, you know, Karen, to kind of help get feedback from parents that we need, parents and especially teachers and union membership need to be involved in these committees, but they can all report back to the board to review their findings. And at that point, there are more questions. I think we could have some type of board committee of the whole. But I agree, there's a lot of ground to cover here and a lot to do, but that's just my opinion. Does anyone else have any thought?
I do. This is Ann. A bit about the e-learning, I mean, we're hearing a lot of discussion even earlier in this meeting about the different audiences and wanting transparency. So, for this one, I'm kind of in favor of the committee of the whole and having it open so that there's plenty of discussion from all the different groups.
Anyone else?
Abby, it's Teresa. I guess my question would be, there's no limitation, the only limitation we have is the two board members, right? We can have as many other community members and administrators and teachers in those committees?
Correct.
Okay. So, once again, I'm going to echo what you said, there's a lot to do in a little amount of time, so, as well as Dr. Dearman as well. So, I agree that you could start it if you feel the need, then we need to make it into a different committee meeting than we can. So, I just know there's a lot to do and there's a short amount of time to get it done.
This is Mike Wisdom. Teresa, I'd agree with you. Committee of the whole means all of us are expected to be there all the time. I'm not sure that's the most productive course. Some of us have more or less experience in these areas and the people that have the most, if they wish to be involved, I hardly encourage that, but I'm not sure that the entire board should be drawn into that. So, I would echo that. Scott, one more bit of bad news for you, I think. As somebody who's already passed the age of 50, I don't know if anybody's warned you or not, but I only feel that I should do so. Once you turn 50, your hair starts to fall out, so just be ready for that, okay?
I would just point out, and maybe I have this wrong, but my understanding was board committees don't have to be the whole board. I believe the president can appoint just one or two members, however many. The difference between a board committee and a superintendent committee, it's my understanding, is that with a board committee, you do have to post, you have to have an agenda. That way, everybody sees what's going on, but not everybody on the board has to be on it. It can be whoever, I think, the president of the board appoints. Am I correct on that?
That is correct. And then you would have to have, you know, you would have to post your meetings, which is transparent, and you would also have to be sure that you take notes and minutes and get the minutes approved. So, you know, if you're willing to take that on, the superintendent, I'm sorry, the board president can appoint the committee with just two board members and then how many ever other public members. So, yes, you're correct.
Hi, this is Cheryl. And this is great input and I think it's a work in progress in trying to figure out how these committees work and we first have to determine what the committees are. And it could go both ways. The difficulty is if we do committee of the whole coming out of the gate, then that means all this should be there versus if people are appointed. And I think once the committees are identified and we know different board members have different strengths and backgrounds, and it doesn't have to be that it has to be committee of the whole. And if it is otherwise, then people can indicate where they think that they can add value across the board, you know, spreading out the different expertise, well, not expertise, but our backgrounds, that maybe we could add value along with, you know, everyone else that's on the committee. So, I think it's pretty fluid and I think once we see the committees, maybe we can make that final decision.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? All right then, we can move on to the next item, which is the district office update. Mrs. Holhouser will present information regarding an update on the new district office. And again, I want to thank you, Teresa, for your work on this and I enjoyed watching the video that you sent and so I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I was going to give a background here. Can you stop that video, Scott? Oops, I can't hear him. Can you hear me?
Scott's muted. He stopped it.
Okay, got it.
Can you hear you, Teresa?
That's his sign language for carry on.
Okay. So, I just wanted to give a little background for all of you. I think everyone knows this. Back in October, in October 15th, we had the first meeting for the district office and included several of the administrative staff, another board member, Mr. Wisdom, Mike Wisdom, who is doing a tremendous job helping me with this as well. We had a few meetings and we knew we had a pretty aggressive timeline to ensure that we would be out of the current lease space and into the new space prior to the lease expiring. I brought this to the board in November. The team had a presentation November 20th and I believe it was in the January board meeting that it was approved. During that time, from January to now, there's been a tremendous lot of work done by the team on establishing the size, the arrangement in the office, the actual footprint of it and the like. So, a tremendous effort by the entire team and administration. And what I wanted to do is give kudos to Mandy Ellis, who helped put this video together. It's going to show you where we were and where we're at today. And then at the end, I'll give you an update to that. So, if you can go ahead and start that, Dr. Dearman? to that. So if you can go ahead and start that, Dr. Dearman.
Is there music?
There should be.
I don't hear any. I thought I remembered music.
There is.
Hey, Abby.
I can't get the music to go.
Then Abby, you could sing along.
La 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 la. Happy birthday. Wow, that was quick.
It did not take long for the house to come down, and I'm sure many people were watching as that occurred.
I had a friend from high school that it came down so quickly. She was like, wow, that was fast. She was watching from across the street.
And we're getting closer here to where you'll see what the building will look like here in just a few seconds. And that's going to be the new building, district office on the corner. And if you notice, there'll be an eagle on the side of the building as well. Definitely our trademark.
That was really nice, very professional, Teresa. Thank you so much.
And just to give an update too, the bid packets went out on Friday, I believe it was the 20, last Friday, the 15th. I know they're having pre-bid meetings this week. One was yesterday. I believe they have another one on Thursday. The final bid is due June 2nd. So we'll be reviewing those at that time. And the expected groundbreaking will be, it should be the first week in June. So beginning June 8th, dependent of, of course, upon weather and the bidding. So pretty soon you'll be seeing the structure go up, and we'll keep you updated as well.
What is the expected completion time pending weather?
I believe that should be the end of August, September timeframe, I believe. I don't have that right in front of me, but it'll be before the, before the lease is expired. So it should be early fall.
Wow, that's fast. Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Kudos or compliments? Nice job. Very good. Okay, we're going to move on then to the grade three, five report card update. Information on this report card is included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Seeing no questions, we'll move on to the DHS textbook proposal. Information regarding that proposal is included in the board packet. Are there any questions?
I have a question on that. I know that there's textbook proposals. Can this be done online, like to have the book on the computer as opposed to actually having a textbook, I mean, given some of our financial concerns right now?
Yes. And when buying textbooks, the cost difference between buying just a, an online version license versus also a text, they bundle it and they price it accordingly because they know they're not necessarily going to be able to charge the same for both. So the cost difference of having prints versus online only is pretty small, and we've always moved forward with the understanding that we always want to have that printed text because the brain doesn't necessarily encode information best when always reading off the digital screen. So we always have been wanting to have that printed text available for students. So that's why you see both.
Does that mean that there are as many texts as there are online licenses or whatever it is their call? I think, did Dr. Dearman say they only get like one classroom worth of texts? Is that what you said, Dr. Dearman?
For these two, you have just one class set, and then because of just the number of students who are taking those two new AP courses, and then each, then student would have an online license. So they're equal licenses and printed text in this case.
All right. Any further questions? We'll move on to the consolidated district plan. Oh, I'm sorry.
This is Ann. Am I on or off right now?
You're on.
Okay. So just to clarify, does that mean that there's the same number of books as licenses? So students could take the books home with them? Or is that correct?
It's an AP class, Ann, so there's only one section anyway. So we don't have, you know, 300 kids taking AP Human Geography. So there's one class set.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Consolidated District Plan. Information regarding that is included in the board packet. Are there any questions on the consolidated district plan? Hearing none, we'll go to requalification and middle school. Information regarding middle school requalification standards is included in the board packet. Do we have any questions? Middle school grading practice handbook language. Information regarding middle school grade book practices handbook language is included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Spanish teaching position. Information regarding the Spanish teaching position is available in the board packet. Are there any questions?
Just to clarify, is this the one where we're talking about not being able to find a half-time Spanish teacher?
Correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to understand this one. So you can't find a half-time one, and so what you're proposing is to hire a full-time position, and that person would be half-time middle school and half-time high school? Is that correct?
Yes, that would definitely be one of the options that we had discussed. We had an admin meeting last week, Thursday, and this was a concern that Mr. Holmes, Mr. Johnson and I had brought to that meeting to discuss, as we've been watching that part-time Spanish position and not seeing anyone apply, or we've had one application, but not, that person isn't certified to teach the course. So to otherwise make that position alluring, then the topic of adding sections at the high school and then allowing that part-time to become full-time, given how things have showed out as explained in the information item at the elementary level, to see if that would be an option that would be doable.
I wondered if it's possible to hire a half-time permanent sub?
I mean, we can always look at posting it as a sort of kind of like we do for a leave cover. We just haven't advertised it as that. So that could definitely be a route.
Do you feel like there would be applicants for that?
You know, I don't know. It's definitely an avenue that we hadn't considered, at least that we've, that came one we were discussing last week. So again, that's something that we can definitely look into. I know that many are in contact with, with those who had taught in the district. So we'll see what networks we can reach out to, to see if there'd be any interest in that.
Would that half-time permanent sub be required to be certified? Because I'm just wondering if we couldn't get a part-time, I mean, yeah, part-time regular teacher and only have one application, and they weren't certified. Would the sub need to be certified?
Yes. I mean, we would definitely want and need that for, because this position would be the one that would be teaching Spanish one pre-AP at both middle schools. So yes, they would need to be certified. Again, in terms of, I was necessarily talking about reposting it in a different name, but in terms of reaching out to some retired individuals, we can definitely see what we can do in that regard. Absolutely.
With regards to the use of the other half of that person that you're proposing at the high school, I think that it would be, the person would teach also Spanish five AP? Is that correct?
So what we would do is add an extra section of Spanish five AP to Sandra Ida Apollo's course load, and then a lower-level Spanish course would then go to this proposed, then hopeful, full-time position for, that being one of the additional courses that individual would have. And then we would look as well at Spanish, Spanish one in particular. Spanish two, those sections are always full. So we would have the opportunity there to open those sections up and potentially not only reduce class sizes, but then also make sure that we have enough seats should any interest change or new students come or anything like that. Because we kept those section numbers pretty tight.
Right now, do we have enough teachers to teach those classes?
Right now, for all of our high school requests, we have our current foreign language staff is able to teach all those courses, which is why the need for the part-time Spanish to teach at the middle school, since our high school Spanish teachers can no longer do that.
Good. I guess my concern is, you know, given the projections and the budget, you know, adding staff at this time, you know, I love the foreign language program. I'm a big proponent of it. I see the value of it. I've lived in a foreign country and, you know, experienced that. And so I hate to take away from it, but I just don't see how we can add staff at a time when, you know, we're looking at the deficits that we're looking at. So, you know, what I would like to see is kind of a, I don't know, if there's a task force or further study of the whole program and how we can do more with less, given that that's our budget situation.
Gotcha. Again, this was just to bring you this, an information item, making you aware of where we were with that posting, and that we are definitely in the process of talking about what we can do to meet the current demand.
Are there any other questions regarding this item for the Spanish teaching position?
But I do think, I think I want to echo what Karen's saying. I think she speaks for the whole board, you know, from what we've seen. It's not really an economic storm coming to us. It very well could be an economic tsunami, and we're going to all have to start working together to try and meet that and continue offering the same level of services without.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. Information regarding the evaluise contract is included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Information regarding the DHS coach handbook is included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Information regarding the wellness-
I'm sorry, about the coaches handbook. I know we did have some concerns raised by a parent, and we have had, you know, some issues with confusion on that. I was just wondering if there was any consideration given to having a coaches handbook or athlete handbook, like we do have a student handbook and a employee handbook? Maybe have a committee that looks at that?
Karen, there is a committee. It's the Athletic Leadership Committee.
Oh, okay. So do they, do they review the handbook every year?
Yes, they did.
Okay.
Yes, they did. And I, you know, this thing, I saw that too. This is something that needs to be turned over to our athletic director. This is her job. Turn this over to her and let her handle it.
So, you know, for the, for the student handbook and the employee handbook, we have a committee where there's board and community participation. Do you think that's a wise thing to do for this as well?
That, the Athletic Leadership Committee is made up of, of community members and administration and at least one board member, at least it was. So that committee does exist.
I don't know if I'm on or off here.
I can hear you.
It does seem like we get questions about, you know, the roles of athletes and communication. Has there ever been a athlete booklet or something along those lines? And I mean, I know we have the coaches handbook.
Isn't there a student code of conduct for athletes in the policy? Isn't there a, standards for student behavior and that kind of thing?
There is. It's more about, I think, discipline and chain of command and things like that. I don't, I don't know that it goes into a lot of detail, but somebody else can probably answer that better than me.
Do they still have the meetings the students have to go to? I know my kids have been out for quite some time now, but do they have to?
No. It's a video now.
Right, right.
Watch, and then you sign. I think you can even do it online now.
But doesn't that go into those topics?
Well, the coaches have their meeting, and Katie's always present. So those meetings still do happen in person. And then there are some videos they're required to watch as well. So it's a little bit of both.
Yeah, it's a 24-minute-long code of conduct video, just that way.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions about the coaches handbook, suggestions, anything? If not, we'll move on. The Wellness Committee. Information regarding the Wellness Committee is included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Information regarding right-at-school contract is included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Information regarding transportation contract renewal is included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Information regarding prevailing wage resolutions is included in the board packet. Are there any questions? Information regarding Policy 2:20, Item 9, is included in the board packet. Are there any questions?
I got a question, Abby. I'm going to back, can I back you up to the right at school? Do we, do we, should we be committing to that if we don't know what our kids are going to be doing? You don't let the students to school, you can't let the daycare in either.
Well, I think for summer, Dr. Dearman said that they were not going to have right at school. Is that correct, Dr. Dearman? Can you-
Right. I'm talking in the fall. If we have half-days at school in the fall or something, or every other day, it's only fair that they don't come as much either.
Dr. Dearman?
Adjust that contract accordingly, but that is one of the concerns, you know, with children, is the daycare aspect of that and the pressure that puts on parents if it's not available. So I'd hate to just not move forward with it, but you're right, there is some unknown there, but we'll adjust that contract as we know more.
Okay. All right, thanks.
I understand what Tim is saying, too. If they're still in the building exposing themselves to each other, does that extrapolate over into the limited classroom areas if we plan on going back, you know, with the AB days? So. All right, back to the Policy 2.20. Item 9, is that, are there any questions?
I had, I just had a-
Hello? Ann?
Yeah, am I on now?
Yes.
Oh, okay. To address some of the comments earlier about this proposed change, that the board, we were supposed to approve curriculum, and kind of two big things we do is curriculum and policy and finance. And historically, the board has approved the handbooks and the curriculum guide every year. And, and we've seen with other school districts that this is a common practice, and some of the policies we have in there, 310 says that the superintendent shall develop administrative procedures, manuals and handbooks that are in alignment with the board policy. So there is quite a bit in here that says that this is part of the board's responsibility. And what we're talking about really is significant changes. So what happened a few weeks ago, near the end of school, is that normally, which is in our handbook, the, the way the percentage of grading goes, it's 40% for, like the third quarter, 40% the second, or the fourth quarter, and 20% final. So your weighting is 40%, 60%. And I know there was a lot of talk with the different groups internally, with the teachers and the, and the staff and such, but it was changed to 80/20, which is a significant change. And it was right at the end. And the board was not informed and didn't have any discussion with this. So that's why we have this in there is that just to keep it so that significant changes are brought to the board and we're not getting surprises. And that's what happened this time. And I would consider this to be significant. So that's my point of why it's here and we have all due respect for the teachers and administration. It's just the board has to, you know, this is curriculum, this is policy, and that's why we need to be involved with this.
And to that, to that point, I'll, I'll just say this. What we had there was a, a very large breakdown in communication across various avenues. So I'm not going to point the finger at anybody but myself. Um, I take responsibility for that. Uh, we were making decisions very quickly because of the timeframes we were under. Um, yes, I did reach out to a board member. Hindsight being 2020, I, I should have reached out to everyone. So I'll take the responsibility for that. There's a lot of things that could be done differently. And, you know, you live and you learn. And I think that's a, a good lesson to learn, especially what we've got in front of us now with the start of school and the, the volume of work that's going to be done. I'll tell you, the one thing that's been consistent in all those email correspondences has been the fact that communication is the key. So I think, you know, there's a lesson learned here that communication is the key. I didn't do as good a job communicating as, as I should have amongst, to the board and also with my administrative team and vice versa. So hopefully we can learn from that lesson, move forward and not repeat those mistakes.
Thank you, Dr. Dearman.
Yeah, thank you very much.
This is Mike Wisdom.
Go ahead, Mike.
I said, um, I've been talking with Teresa about this. And I think I'm not, you're, you're saying one thing, but then, uh, that this proposed language says something different. And I think it's that proposed language that's freaking everybody out because it is so broad. It seems like it would affect everything. Um, can we, can we get people to put their mics on mute if they're not speaking? We're getting background noise. Um, thank you. There are parts of the board policies, this is a, this is a big addition to number nine in, in, um, board policy two colon 20. Six colon 40 already says that the board is responsible, must approve all significant changes to curriculum before those changes are made. I think what you're getting at, if, if you just change this, this language to say basically that the board has to approve the curriculum, textbooks and educational services and approve all significant changes. It can stop there and then you don't get so far down into micromanaging everything that it, that, that it handcuffs our staff. So I, I think you're saying one thing and, um, meaning well with it, but the language that's proposed is overly broad. Is, and I think I speak for Teresa. Teresa, I'd like your input on this as well. Okay?
Yeah. Yes. I was trying, I was trying to get it, I didn't want to interrupt. I agree with that. Policy six 40 has that, that language in it. But I, I think we need to, to look at what we're trying to achieve here. I guess my concern is making that too broad. And, you know, the, you know, what is the, the definition we have? What responsibility do the, does the administration have versus what needs to be approved? Uh, for example, if somebody is three tenths of a point away from an A, do we want all of those type of things coming to us for grading? Probably not. I mean, there's certain things that are happening with I E Ps, if there's extenuating circumstances, whatever that may be. So I think we need to have that operational definition of responsibility and where that, what does significant mean? And I hate to go into that specifically, but, and, and completely agree with, with Mike. I echo that same thing. I just think we need to be careful because we need to let the administration and teachers know that we trust what they do, but we need to be careful on, on how we do this part of it.
I don't know that we would want to try to get into a definition of significant.
Correct.
That would just be a mud pile. Um, let's just leave it at this, uh, administration. You're on the side of caution. If you think it's something that could be deemed as significant by the board, then, then run it by the board. And we'll be responsive, but I do not want to get into all of that minutia. If, if any of the rest of you wants to, go right ahead, but I do not, I don't have the time for it.
I tend to agree with you, Mike. I, I just think that, you know, we, we do have, uh, a role to play as stated in that 6.40. Um, and I understand Anne's, um, intentions are very, very good. However, um, you're right, it is covered here. And, you know, Dr. Dearman has, you know, stood up and, and, and realized it was, you know, maybe a communication issue that, that we know anytime anything goes wrong or there's a misunderstanding, communication is always the issue. Whether it's us not communicating or seeking input from, from union members or, or vice versa. And I think it's with this unusual unprecedented in time, it was just something that they were trying to solve a problem and, and get there. And, uh, you know, we, we just didn't have the opportunity or time or the thought to communicate. And, um, but I, but I think moving forward, uh, we won't be under such constraints. And, um, I, I tend to agree.
One of the things that, that I noticed was previously, you know, the board has always had a process um, where we review the student handbook every year. And the changes made in that process are usually threefold. One are changes made by the board through policy. Two is state law changes or maybe even federal law. And three is changes that the administration or the staff recommend. And then those changes are discussed and brought before the board. And the board has always approved a student handbook and any changes to those in the past, as far as I know. And I believe other schools do this too. So I guess, um, what happened with the grading change in remote learning, which, you know, I understand it was a weird time and, and things were happening fast and, and it was so was unique time. But, um, I guess my concern is that it not set a precedent that things can be changed that are listed in the employee hand, or in student handbook that are normally reviewed and deliberated on by the board and go through that process and, and through the open meetings and all of that, um, you know, without, without board input. So I, I think that the language that's listed may be a little bit broad, but I, I would personally like to tie it to what's included in the student handbook. Because I, I think that is something the board has always approved changes to. So I would think that any changes to that should be approved by the board.
I think that the other part here is that, is what Karen was saying is that's the, the student handbooks and the curriculum guides, there is student code in there, there is, uh, federal and state law. So I, I do think it needs to be reviewed and I think we can, you know, not make the language so specific just to say that, that that should be included in what we approve when there are significant changes. And I think that would be good enough.
Thank you, Anne.
Uh, if you don't mind too, this is Cheryl, just laying in. And I, I, I tend to agree, um, with what, uh, Mike Wisdom and, um, Teresa and, um, what you said, Abby. I do think these things are covered in current policy. Um, and I think to go more specific and add language to what the board's powers are, isn't the right way to go. Um, I think Scott did, you know, indicate that, you know, this, this is an unprecedented in time. And I do think that when, you know, we already approved the student handbooks and curriculum guides. Um, and I think there's several policies beyond 6.40. I think there's 2.240 that might speak to part of this and 7.190. So to add addition to that, I, I think we just need to focus on, um, from a board governance perspective. Um, and I, I am probably 6.40. I don't think we need to add additional language. Um, if we want to continue down that path, then, you know, I recommend we do this later. Um, I think that we have to keep our eye on the ball, you know, um, we've got to focus. We've got a lot of irons in the fire here and the priorities that we need to focus on working together for the return to school. Um, there's, there's a lot going on and I think this is not, uh, the focus. And, and I think Scott addressed it appropriately.
All right, um, you know, we do have a lot of policies that are, that, that cover this. But I also want to reiterate and, and, and stress that, you know, we need to make sure that we do follow those policies. Both of us, the board and, and the administration as well as, um, our, our leadership teams. And, and be clear that those policies are reflected in our handbooks and that they're not contradictory to, I know we had an issue with curriculum guides and handbooks maybe contradicting. I think our, um, our teams have done a good job in trying to clean those up. I appreciate the effort that, that our board members and, and leadership team have put into doing that. Um, but if there are no more questions regarding this 2.20 or no more comments, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the next item. Okay, this concludes the information discussion items. The board will now move on to the consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussion regarding items in the consent agenda? May I please have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Hello?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Mike and Tim, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Lavinburg?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Fisher Room?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Holthouser?
Aye.
Humble? Aye. Motion carried. The board will now move on to the action items. Uh, bill list, treasures report, district investor report are included in the board packet. Are there any questions? May I have a motion to approve the pay, oh, someone had a question?
Abby, I have a question. And I don't know if Mr. Hackett Damon's on the, on the call or not. Um, I just, I had asked a question regarding the commerce checking balance and the Schwab balance. And I just want, if he's on the, if he's on the line to explain to the other board members why there's differences in the amounts based on the statements?
If, if you give me a minute, I can add him to the meeting.
Okay.
He's not currently on, but I can bring him in.
Or we, or we could do it offline too. It's up to you, uh, the other board members.
So I'd like to hear that as well, please.
Yeah, please.
I believe his email indicated there was interest that had not yet been reflected in the statements and that's why they were off. Is that correct, Dr. Dearman?
No, that wasn't what it said, Abby.
What it say, Mike? Do you recall what it said, Mike?
Yeah, I've got it right in front of me. The difference in the Schwab statement consists of an unrealized gain that is added in an account value on the statement, but has not hit our books yet. Um.
It's gain.
Yeah. And the commerce checking amount on the treasure report is pulled from the balance sheet and not the bank statement.
And also I want to add to that, what I'd like to know also is for the commerce checking, um, ba- basically for both. If we see that unrealized gain the next month, how that works when we see it actually, um, in the treasury's, treasures report as well as the savings at commerce, those balances match? So is that, um, it, the reason behind why the, the checking wouldn't match versus the savings?
Damon's in the meeting now.
Sorry, hold, hold on one second. I gotta shut off the YouTube so we're not getting feedback. Okay, I'm sorry. Here I am. Um, yeah, Teresa, the, the difference is on the Carl Schwab statement this time, um, there was unrealized gain that shows up in the, um, account value, but it hasn't been actually added into the actual, um, dollars. So it's not in our books yet. So that will get added in, I believe, in the next month, but it's an unrealized gain. So the money is going to be there, but it's not technically there yet. And then.
When you say unrealized gain, are you talking about interest or stocks went up?
Yes, in, in interest.
Oh, so it was interest. Okay.
Yeah.
I had an additional question about the, uh, the sheet. If you're, Teresa, if you're done.
Go ahead, Karen.
Um, I had asked previously, my understanding was that we have that huge amount that's in either savings or checking. And I believe part of that is receiving higher interest than just a regular savings or checking account. Is that correct?
So as I put in the email, Karen, there is, the checking account is not interest bearing. The savings account at Commerce, which is money market, is interest bearing. So those are the two different accounts. And then we also, after the minutes are approved for this meeting, we'll be, um, setting up the interest bearing account at Fortress Bank as well, which will be moving money over there because we have the opportunity to earn more interest there. So at Commerce there's.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
So right now, there's only one type, one level of interest received in savings. I thought there had been much of that move to a higher interest bearing account.
Well, there, it, it was all still the same account back in the summer when interest rates were higher. Um, those money markets were earning 2% interest and then interest rates all fell off.
It's all one fund, not two separate?
Correct.
Okay.
And then Teresa, did you want me to explain the commerce, um, uh, thing that I emailed you about today as well?
You know, yes, Damon. And I just want to understand savings, those match the statements, but the checking does not. So if you could just explain that to the board.
Yeah. So they're all being pulled, the, the balances that you're seeing on the treasures report are being pulled off the balance sheet. They're not pulled off the bank statement. So that's the difference. But the only fund that's affected by that is the checking account, really not the, um, money markets because there's not much activity in those money markets. So it's the difference between a bank statement and the balance sheet.
Why, why is it being pulled from the balance, the statement instead of the, the statements that we're getting?
Uh, that's how it's been ever since I tracked it down from 2016. That's just how the, that's how the treasure support's always been done. So that's, I continue to do it the way Karen did it when she was here.
You know, Damon, I can understand it because we're cash basis accounting. So if we've written checks and, and we know they've been written, but they haven't cleared yet, we'd show less than our bank does.
Mm-hmm.
Also cash basis on savings. If that money hasn't, if they haven't, if they haven't cashed those yet, then we should be an equal amount off in our savings higher, shouldn't we?
No, because there's no checks being written out of the savings account. The savings account is basically just the in and out. Um, there's not extra activity that's going on that's attributed to the balance sheet that's in the savings account. And we can certainly report it differently. I mean, if we want to just report what the bank statement is, we can do that. This is just reflecting what the balance sheet is.
Makes it kind of hard to track is all, um.
Sure.
I have an additional question if, if you're done with that line of questioning, Mike.
Go ahead, Karen.
Okay. I was wondering if I can ask questions about the, um, budget scenarios, scenarios, the projections. Is that under this? Can I discuss that under this item?
You mean the projections that we received previously?
Yes.
I don't know, Mike. I, I mean, Tim, uh, sorry. Dr. Dearman, would that be appropriate for her to be able to ask that information into this item? I'm okay with it. I just. Dr. Dearman?
Yeah, I, I have myself muted, so I had to, to fix that. I'm looking at the actual action item.
Yeah, I can ask them offline or.
It, I would prefer that you not because it doesn't, the agenda does not speak to that.
No problem.
And I'm sure, Karen, that we'll be having some meetings in the near future here regarding the finances. So, sorry.
Yeah, I guess maybe if we could discuss at least just having, um, maybe a, a separate meeting for that, where we talk about our budget situation.
Sure, that, that's something we can do. And, and I've had that request from others. So we'll, we'll do that, uh, set that date very soon.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no other questions, could I have a motion to approve payment of the bills?
I'll do that. This is Tim. I moved, I moved to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of $3,608,449.40.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Is that Anne? Okay, very good. Any, any discussion? Roll call vote. Lavinburg?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Okay, Holthouser?
Aye.
Humble?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Blue?
Blue?
Aye.
Disharoon?
Aye.
Very good, motion carried. Um, information regarding board meeting dates for the 2020, 2021 school years included in the packet. Are there any questions? Could I have a motion to approve the agreement?
I think only a couple of us has it printed out. So, Tim, you and I are going to be making.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have mine printed out and I can't get to it.
I move to approve the board meeting dates for the 20, 2020, 2021 school year as presented.
Second? Is that Cheryl Blue?
Yes.
Thank you, Cheryl. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Blue?
Cheryl? Mrs. Blue?
Aye. Sorry.
Uh, Disharoon?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Holthouser?
Aye.
Humble?
Aye.
Waggonbuck?
Aye.
Very good, motion carried. Information is included in the board packet regarding middle school world language course changes. Are there any questions?
So the, I have a, some comments on this. Um, the testimony by the teachers brought up a lot of questions for me. I would have loved to have been able to have back and forth and I know we can't do that. Um, but I was wondering, if there's not a rush on this, if we could table this. Um, I, I really don't feel like I have the information that I need to make a decision on this. And I'd rather have the time to, I would have loved to have heard, heard that in the information, uh, section last time, but, but this testimony did raise some questions for me. So if anybody else is interested in that, I, I would really prefer to table it.
I would ask what, what's the timeline we need if, if this were to go through?
Uh, the middle school is going to need to, to have some idea. They were hoping to have completed, as they normally do, explore class choices for students for next year so they can complete schedules, which they are typically rounding out about this time and, um, and like to get that wrapped up for the, uh, before the end of the year. Um, I know it's something that both Antonio and, uh, Jason have been, um, very, uh, inquisitive about to make sure that we're getting that answer so that they can send out now to, to families without Chromebooks, since we're collecting those now, the forms so that students can select their, explore course choices for next year. So they, they just can't complete scheduling at this point without knowing whether or not these classes are going to be offered, as is, or if we're going to be using the old courses as they were named.
Thank you, Matt. Now, you know, here's what I wonder. First of all, scheduling is probably going to be all up in the air, but I know we like to get these things done before the last minute. Do we have, uh, do we have four people that, that, or more, that feel that they can support this? Or do we have another, enough people that want to table this so that we can get, get more information as, as Karen is asking?
I guess my concern with it, and, you know, and I understand the need to expose students to cultures. Um, but I also know that there's a huge interest by the parents to have more Spanish. Now, I, I believe, or, or French, one language or the other, um, before eighth grade, so that the kids are better prepared to succeed in high school, to do well on that AP test, and just start the process earlier to build fluency. And so I know there's great interest among parents to have more of one language. And my concern with this proposal is it just divides. Instead of receiving one quarter of one language, they receive, um, one quarter of two languages. So it's cut in half, uh, the amount of time. Now, the first time I'd heard that there wasn't, um, a real language component to this, I thought that there was. I thought that the culture and the introduction to the language was in grade school. And that, that is what I thought I heard from before. So I was surprised that this does not have a real language component, you know, except numbers and alphabet. So I guess, you know, I didn't know that, so I'd like to discuss that more with people. And just so you know, those are what my concerns are. I know that, um, many parents would prefer to have a, a quarter of at least one language. So that, that was my concern with the proposal.
Hi, this is Cheryl. Um, you know, I really think that the foreign language staff spoke to exactly what the goals are and what can be done in one quarter. Um, and just moving it to one language isn't going to make them proficient. The idea is to expose them and explore the languages. And I think that was crystal clear. And I think we've heard that over and over. Um, and I don't know delaying this, um, is worth exploring more, whether four and a half weeks would make them more proficient when that's not the goal. It gives them the informed decision on where they want to go once they start pre-AP in eighth grade. So I would recommend that we go ahead and, and vote if we have, you know, a number of people that, uh, would support that.
Well, I, I, personally, I think the teacher's testimony was pretty compelling. Um, I really enjoyed listening to, to their, their thoughts. And what was also quite telling was the Spanish teacher who said she was still in, uh, favor of exposing children to French and, and, uh, you know, her interesting story about taking two opposing classes and when she was a child or a student. So, um, I can see both sides of this, but I, I think maybe we should just go ahead and put it to a vote. And if we don't have enough votes, maybe we could, unless there's someone that's going to make a second, uh, uh, on Karen's, uh, suggestion to table, I, I think maybe we should just go ahead and, and take a vote.
Can I, can I, can I ask a question?
Can I step in a little bit here? Karen, I appreciate we're trying to do, a- as always, you're trying to represent the entire district and, and the parents that you've heard from. Um, as, as this was an informational item last week, maybe, maybe these things should have been alerted to and we could have dealt with a little beforehand. I too was persuaded by, by the speakers today. Um, and it was both Spanish and French teachers where the Spanish teachers were even saying they liked the idea of it to other languages. Um, so I would hate to try to second guess them a- at this point when it just do need to be worked out. So I, I would say, Karen, perhaps we should come back and revisit this at a future date instead of trying to change it now.
Ann, I, I heard you break in too when Mike did. You want to continue?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes.
So, to be clear, so for the, the additional half teacher, is that what this is for? The world language course change or is that?
No, this, no. This, this one apparently does not cost anymore. I think that other addition of the language teacher was for something else. Is that correct, Dr. Dearman?
I'll speak, that's correct.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Karen, did you officially make a motion to table this? Because I didn't.
No, I didn't actually make a technical motion. I just made a suggestion. So, you know, if there are other people that want to support this this time, I just have too many questions. And so I hate to make a decision when I don't have all the information that I need. So I'll just obtain if you, you know, if there are enough people to vote on this. I mean, my concern is, I just think that, that parents would be disappointed to have a reduction in the amount of foreign language, um, of one, one language.
May I have a motion to approve the course changes?
I move to approve middle school world language course changes as presented.
I'll second.
Look at Holthouser, Mr. Waggonbuck. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Holthouser?
Aye.
Waggonbuck?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Disharoon?
I'll stand.
Henry?
Aye.
And Humble?
Aye. Thank you very much. Approval of the accelerated policy language information is included in the board packet regarding the accelerated policy language. Are there any questions? May I please have a motion to approve the acceleration policy language?
I motion to approve the accelerated language.
Thank you, as, as presented. Thank you, Mrs. Henry. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Wisdom. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Henry?
Am I on?
Yes.
All right. What a hard time with this.
That's okay, Henry?
Oh. Aye.
Aye, Ann, thank you.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Humble?
Aye.
Waggonbuck?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Disharoon?
Aye.
Holthouser?
Aye.
Very good, motion carried. Information regarding ESL and language specialists is included in the packet. Now, before I ask if there are any questions, just, I want to remind you, these are, um, budget neutral positions. And I clarified this with Dr. Dearman today. Uh, these are positions that, that there is money already provided for and, um, it's not going to cost the district additional money to provide these positions. Correct, Dr. Dearman? All right. Are there any more questions? May I please have a motion to approve the agreement?
I move to approve the ESL and language specialist as presented.
We did that already.
No.
We did the next.
We did transitional, I think. Did we go out of order, Abby?
No, she's in order.
No.
She's in order.
Thank you.
Ann just did that last one.
No, that was.
No, that was the accelerated policy.
That was the accelerated policy. Okay, so it was Mike and then Teresa, is that correct?
I have a question. Is this something that we, every year, we have to re-get the money through some sort of grant? Is that correct?
I had Alyssa, yes, that is correct. I had Alyssa jump in on the call so she can answer that directly because she writes those title grants.
The title one grants are, are constant, but go ahead, Alyssa.
In the IDEA grant and the Title III grant, so we've really worked them into a few different grants because it'll be covering all areas. So it'll be something that we will be working on every year to ensure. And if we don't have the money in the grants, we'll be looking at placing and going back to where we were at this year.
Okay. And does that include the transitionalist specialist too?
Yeah, the transition specialist will be under IDEA grant and the step contract.
Okay, so we had a motion and we had a second. Any further discussion on the ESL and language specialist? Roll call vote, please.
Wisdom?
Aye.
Holthouser?
Aye.
Waggonbuck?
Aye.
Humble?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Disharoon?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Very good, motion carried. Information regarding transitional specialists is included in the packet. Are there any questions? May I please have a motion to approve the agreement?
I move to approve transitional specialist as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Holthouser. May I have a second?
Second.
That was Mrs., uh, Henry. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Holthouser?
Aye.
Henry? Aye. Wisdom?
Aye.
Waggonbuck?
Aye.
Humble?
Aye.
Blue?
Aye.
Disharoon?
Aye.
Very good, motion carried. Information regarding the administrator contract is included in the packet. Do we have any questions?
Um, I had a question. I was thinking this was going to be at a later time. Was this, we discussed before, it was going to be at the end of the year.
That was Christmas and that was for those that were on multi-year contracts. These are single-year contracts, like assistant principals.
Oh, okay.
And they have to be renewed every year or technically they don't have a job.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
May I have a move, a motion to approve the administrator contract as presented?
I move to approve the administrator contract as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. Who was the second?
Cheryl.
Karen? Oh, sorry.
Who was the second, Karen?
I did, yes.
Well, yeah, either one, it's Cheryl or Karen.
Okay, uh, we'll put down Mrs. Blue. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Waggonbuck? Waggonbuck?
Oh, come on, I answered aye.
Uh, Blue?
Aye.
Disharoon?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Holthouser?
Aye.
Humble?
Aye.
Wisdom?
Aye. Can I ask a question on procedure? When we, our contracts, where, how do we have those stored?
Dr. Dearman?
What do you mean, they're in their personnel files once they're signed?
Yeah, where, w- once they're signed, where, where do we store the administrative contracts? Or all of our personnel, our major personnel contracts?
Uh, district office.
Is it, is it hard copy or is it stored in the cloud or?
That, those are a hard copy and then I have an electronic copy that I keep for myself as well.
You know, if, if, going back to the private sector, uh, in case there's a fire or damage to somebody's hard drive or something, but something that's pretty important, I might make a recommendation that we make sure these administrative contracts, that our attorney has a copy of those once they've been signed. Um, at least it's, we're covered in multiple places then.
It's also, isn't it still on the board book that you can access where we passed, you know, the meeting where we passed those and approved those?
You wouldn't have the, you'd have the, the verbiage, but you wouldn't have the signed agreement, I don't think.
Well, that's true, right.
And then they are stored in the cloud via my computer.
It's easy enough to send a copy to the attorney and they can just stick it in the, in the Dunlap file. I know some districts do that, others don't.
Yeah, that's easy enough.
Those, they don't charge us.
Sounds good. All right. Are you done, uh, Mr. Wisdom?
Uh, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, information regarding requests for proposals draft is included in the packet. Are there any questions? May I please have a motion to approve the proposal?
Well, first of all, can we clarify what the proposal is? Uh, going back again, we've talked about this sometimes. And given our budget constraints, this is something that, it has a potential for generating more revenue. I think it's something we probably ought to get going on. I, I took the draft, uh, I created this draft basically from what was done already successfully by the airport authority. Um, this would have to go to legal counsel for refinement, review, and making sure that we've done everything right. There still are a bunch of blanks in it. So what we're, I think what we're approving is this as a draft, as a means of getting, starting with a, a request for proposal for a management firm to, to help us with our investments and maximize the returns that we get.
And then we can have legal counsel look at this and cross the Ts and dot the Is. And I think Dr. Dearman and Mike have already had a conversation that this can be done. Is that correct? Great, well, thank you for your work on that, um.
Sure, I would also like to say, I, I don't think this should be a one, one-person endeavor. Uh, I think there probably should be what's called in the document, a steering committee that, that gets involved in this and helps make this go smoothly. So I'd like to suggest that we, um, think about creating that steering committee. A couple of board members, you know, naturally I'd have to be on it because I'm knee-deep in it anyway. Teresa's our, our numbers cruncher. Um, I think she'd be another likely candidate. Damon Hackett would, would clearly have to be a part of this. And Dr. Dearman, I don't know if you have the time, maybe not, but if there's anybody else you think ought to be involved, you can let us know. It is.
Teresa, Teresa, are you willing to be a part of this?
Yes.
Great, wonderful. Damon, Teresa, Mr. Wisdom, and then, uh, Dr. Dearman. All right, very good.
I'd like to adjust the motion a little bit and maybe I move to approve, uh, the, the request for proposals draft as presented after review, um, and comment by legal counsel.
Okay. Okay. Did you get that, Debbie?
Yes, I did.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mrs. Paul Houser, any discussion? Roll call vote.
Wisdom.
Hi.
Paul Houser.
Hi.
Humble.
Hi.
Wagenbach.
Hi.
Henry.
Hi.
Dischurun.
Hi.
Blue.
Hi.
Thank you very much, motion carried. Uh, we actually tabled this last item, so this concludes the action item portion of the meeting. May I please have a motion to adjourn closed session?
Before we get out of closed, hey, Ben, we're going to go into closed, and can you kind of put your little banner up that says we're in closed, and then I'll kick you out of the meeting, and then can you come back in and throw it back on the YouTube channel so we can end it? Thank you.
Well, we have a break again.
Yeah, we're going to take a five-minute break. We will resume back here, and in five minutes, that'd be about 7:57.
Abby, we need to make that, we need to go to closed session. Do you want me to make that motion?
Yes, please.
Okay. I move to adjourn to a closed session for the following purposes as stated in the Open Meetings Act: the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of its specific employees; student disciplinary cases, collective negotiating matters; discussions of minutes of meetings lawfully closed; purchase or lease of real property, security procedures, and litigation.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Wagenbach.
Are, are we supposed to, like, stay on, or do we have to get out and come back in?
Stay on. Use your microphone for now, and please take a five-minute break. We'll see you back here.
We need a roll call.
Roll call vote.
You can tell what I need to do. Please have a, a roll call vote.
Paul Houser.
Wait a minute, we don't need a roll call vote for this. All we have to do is, all those in favor, say aye.
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 All those opposed? Okay, time is 7:52, see you here at 7:57.